I think we should take a picture with it.
Yeah, I think we should.
All of us. I don't know, let's fucking be clear. You're good? Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Work Session. It is Monday, August 26th. A little bit after 6:00, we have four members present. Mr. Britton is out of town. First item on the agenda that I see is discussion of golf carts on public streets. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Cobb at this time, and then I see we are joined by the current and former chief sitting at our table. So this will be an interesting discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Pollak contacted us back shortly before the August 5th meeting and had some questions about golf carts on public streets. He had been contacted, and so at your August 5th meeting, he gave us consensus to have a discussion regarding golf carts on the public streets. And he told me to find an agenda that would accommodate it, and I felt like tonight was the best agenda that could accommodate it, knowing what we have coming up in September and October. In October 2017, the council passed an ordinance, ordinance 1659, and it created a pilot program in the Twin Rivers subdivision that allowed golf carts to be on the streets within the subdivision on the east side of Lockwood. One of the requirements was that the golf cart owners would come in and register the carts with the city so that we can verify that they met the different requirements of state statute. During the six months that the ordinance was in place, no one came in and registered their golf cart, and so the ordinance expired since we had no one to participate. Not long ago, Chief Coleman did an analysis and came to the conclusion that the city's best recommendation is to follow the statutes that allow for low-speed vehicles. And these are golf carts that are basically made street legal. And they can be, is it?
35 mile per hour.
25.
25.
They can be on 35 mile per hour streets.
Okay.
But a low-speed vehicle can, maximum speed's 25.
And so the chief had recommended, rather than trying to regulate, establish regulations for golf carts themselves, that we work to educate the public on low-speed vehicles and then follow that part of the state requirements. And so we structured tonight's discussion based on the analysis that Chief Coleman did, the last analysis by Chief Coleman. Over the weekend, Councilman Chudnow did contact us and ask if we would provide the statute that does provide for the golf carts on local roads. We have that here for you tonight. It's statute 316 dot 212. We also put a copy of the memo that we did with ordinance number 1659, because it sort of breaks down what 316 212 does. So with that, Mayor, I would turn it over to, I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Pollak.
My suggestion is we will let the deputy mayor start. So I was going through all this, and I like the, I do like the approach for low-speed vehicles. The only concerns I had was the vehicles have to, they basically, they have to be registered and tagged, is that correct?
Correct.
And they have to have a VIN number, and they have to be able, I guess the minimum speed is 20 miles an hour, and the maximum speed's 25 miles an hour. So there's like a five mile, mile an hour differential, according to what I read.
The golf carts have a maximum speed of 20. Low-speed have a maximum speed of 25.
Right. So I was trying, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, a maximum speed of 20 to 25. But, you know, I think that that, as I was reading through it, it seems like that's almost too extreme for what we were trying to, or, you know, what was being discussed. I was hoping for something that, you know, to where, yes, they would need to have some sort of insurance, and I don't know if getting the insurance would require them to have a VIN and be tagged or not, but I would hate for them to have to get the vehicle tagged and have a VIN number, because a lot of the, you know, golf cart owners, you know, get them from somebody, you know, that already had one, or, you know, so then they would have to go, and there's a lot of, a lot to just go into getting that VIN number and to get that registration and everything, and what you have to bring in there. So I was looking for something in between, and I know it's one of those things where, you know, we don't want to extend too much manpower on, you know, verifying that the vehicles are up to speed or meet our requirements. You know, I do agree with, you know, the rearview mirrors, the turn signals, all the lights, seat belts, all that kind of stuff that are required. It's just taking it to that next step to have the, you know, tag it and have that VIN number attached to it. And I did read and hear that if the difference between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle, and I was leaning more towards the golf cart, but I did read that the requirement was that then all the streets had to have signage on them for the golf carts. And I was thinking that, you know, maybe to take what we did in Twin Rivers, and that pilot program didn't quite work, but I was seeing if maybe a pilot program in the downtown, the Oviedo on the Park area, and maybe even into the historic downtown, and that may get pushed off till after a lot of the construction and everything gets complete, but to see if maybe, you know, residents that live in the townhomes and stuff, you know, could go through Oviedo on the Park and Oviedo Boulevard and stuff like that with them and figure out a way to try to do a pilot program there. Because as we're trying to become more dense in those areas, I think that having these vehicles go around, you know, would, you know, to get from point A to point B, you know, makes it more, you know, instead of having to go and, you know, get in your car and drive, you know, around the corner to the cultural center or whatever, to just have your golf cart and go over to the events and stuff like that. So I was trying to kind of find a happy medium between the extreme of, you know, basically having a small car that's registered and having a, you know, having a golf cart that doesn't have anything on it. So I think that the pilot program that we did in Twin Rivers was nice, the way we were kind of designing it, but I think maybe it was just the wrong location. That maybe if we put it in, you know, an area like, you know, Oviedo on the Park, an area, and then maybe at some point when the historic area gets built out, those might be better locations for it, to maybe move that pilot program over there. And I did see that if it's a golf cart 14 years old is the minimum age, but I believe we can, in an ordinance, we can change that, I believe.
We can be more restrictive.
More restrictive, yeah, to make it 16 or have a driver's license. So those are my thoughts. I don't know, I know other people have opinions.
Here's my problem with the golf carts.
Yep.
Here's my problem with it. When you have a 14-year-old, can't have a driver's license, because they're too young, but yet we're allowing them to drive on the city streets.
Right.
If you restrict that, what's the enforcement of a city ordinance on a 14-year-old? What's the leverage we have to make that prohibitive, other than a city ordinance citation? But that's just a safety issue. The other issue I have is when you start expanding it according to 316 121, and it's, see, if they're crossing a state road, if they're crossing, Department of Transportation has to determine within the right-of-way, there's things the Department of Transportation has to do, and they can only do it at controlled intersections.
Uh huh.
But if I'm coming off Hillcrest, am I going to go down the controlled intersection? And how am I going to get there, because I can't travel on 434?
Right.
So by the low-speed vehicles, you have to have a driver's license, so they've had some driver training.
Uh huh.
And my concern with a 14-year-old, if you've seen some of the golf carts operated currently in some of the subdivisions, when the 14-year-old is driving, safety is not on their, on none of their mind. And I'd hate to put us in a position where something occurs, and then people are going, why did you allow that? I agree, it's a parental thing, but you know what always happens.
Right.
I would concur with Chief Coleman's suggestion to stay with, if someone wants to use it for that purpose, they can abide by the regulations of the state statute. You can't operate a golf cart on the sidewalk unless it's an eight-foot sidewalk, and the only eight-foot sidewalk is by the golf course.
Uh huh.
So I agree totally with Chief Coleman on going with the low-speed vehicle version instead of allowing the golf carts, because then, again, we have to post where they're allowed, post where they're not allowed.
Uh huh. You have to post where they're not allowed, too? Okay.
Let's say you're going down one street and they're allowed, well, on the other side of the street, they're not.
Gotcha.
So it's posting those, it's putting that extra burden on Public Works and on the department, where if you go with the low-speed state statute, the only thing I would suggest on the, on the low-speed vehicles is to keep them off of Lockwood, because you've got a 35 where people go 45 or higher.
Right.
And then you've got a vehicle going 25 in the right-hand lane, that could create a traffic hazard. So if we look at the...
We can fix that. Make the speed limit 36.
Do that. So then, that brings up another, if we go with the low-speed vehicle, just have to look at the streets. The same goes on 426, when it goes down the 35, or 419, when it goes down the 35. You have a 25 going there, and there are no passing zones.
Uh huh.
You're going to create a...
A bottleneck.
Right, exactly. The same thing is now if you have a golf cart on that road, it's going to create more of a bottleneck with a 14-year-old driver.
Right. Okay. Steve?
I got an argument for you. So state statute, I tend to agree.
Steve, just pull the microphone.
I tend to agree with Chief Chudnow on that one, with the low-speed vehicle statute. But if someone has a road-ready golf cart in the city now, you know, they spend all the money to fix it up, they got lights, they got it registered, they got, do they go register it right at the tag office here behind McDonald's, just like the car?
Correct.
And that, where do they go to get a VIN number? Obviously, they bought a golf cart, it doesn't come with a VIN number. Like, where do they go to get the VIN number? Does anybody know?
It's in that brochure. It talks about how you have to get the VIN number, the, where was the, what attachment was that?
It's called converted golf carts, part of titling, trailer, manufacturer's...
It's in the low-speed vehicle flyer, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's a form 82040 and 86064 you've got to fill out.
Yeah, the only issue I had with that whole thing was trying to get that first, when you go to the converted golf cart section of this flyer, that first piece, that manufacturer's certificate of origin or bill of sale for the golf cart. Like, because there's a lot of people that aren't going to have that, and they may have a golf cart already, that they can, they can, you know, add all the necessities for it, and they...
That's state statute.
Yeah.
So I have the flyer, so where is the office to get, I see what form you need, where's the office to go get?
It says in the, in the blue section, like below where the golf cart is, it says to title, register, an LSV, and then when you talk about the converted section, that's where you, I believe that's where it talked about the VIN.
Oh, to the tax collector's office.
Yeah.
Okay, so you...
Go to a motor services regional office.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so you can go to the tax collector's office right here, you can do the whole thing there. So right now, if somebody has a golf cart and they're driving around Live Oak or Riverside or anybody, just a regular golf cart, kid got a golf cart and is driving it around, and you guys get him, you're going to stop him and give him a ticket? Get him?
We could. We've not been enforcing it with citations. We usually warn them and explain to them that it's not a street-legal vehicle.
Okay.
But if, and statutorily, just going by what the statute states, if you're allowing a 14-year-old, which would be an unauthorized driver, they're criminally allowed, that's a criminal statute. It's also a criminal statute for the parent who allowed that.
Right.
For allowing an unauthorized, unlicensed person to drive.
Right.
A vehicle.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's not the enforcement type we're trying to go with, but it is that in a statute.
All right, I mean, we looked at this, I know I had one resident call me, and he actually is putting, he wanted to, he wanted to know how all this was working, and he wanted us to drive from Mead Manor down Division, down Oviedo Boulevard into Oviedo on the Park, which the speed limit would be fine.
Yep.
But all he asked me was, if I follow this LSV from the state, you guys are going to be okay with that. So my question is if we decide tonight that we're just going to keep the city out of it, so to speak, you guys are going to enforce the state statute? If somebody does everything they do, they can drive it as long as they stay on roads that are 35 or less, or 25 or less?
Currently, it's 35 or less.
All right, so 35 or less.
We have prohibited any roads.
They can do it as long as they're road-ready. I mean, honestly, I think that's it. I don't think we should be letting 14-year-olds, you should have to be a licensed driver.
I agree.
To do. I mean, I think that's the safest thing to do. You know, all our, most of our subdivisions, I mean, are regular, you know, it's not like the villages, you know, where this is geared up for this. And certainly, you know, having a golf cart that is just a regular one that'd be out of Twin Rivers, certainly, like you said, chief, is not safe, you know, for a kid. You get, somebody comes and hits them, I mean, it's over. So, I mean, not that the other one is better, but I'd be just for keeping us to enforce the state statute for low-speed vehicles. I think that's the best way to go. You've got to be licensed, you've got to get insured, and I think that would serve us best. You know, if we do anything else, and we don't follow the state, then you're looking at lawsuits and everything, especially if a young person is doing it. And we've seen them out by us, right? And it's crazy. So that's...
Yeah, even your neighborhood over on Live Oak, if you could take a golf cart to Publix and all that as well.
They could take a low-speed vehicle.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
There is a lady who lives in Live Oak that has a low-speed vehicle. High-speed were complaining that she was going too slow, and we went out, we went out and investigated it and found that it was actually a low-speed vehicle, that she was allowed to be on the street.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I think the discussion was good, and I think that we can move forward with that. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how we can, you know, get this information out. I know you said that when people ask for it, they can get it.
I'm glad to think the discussion's over, I haven't had a chance. And last I looked, I'm the chairman.
Short time.
I'm just checking. You know, you've got to ask some other philosophical questions, you know. Just because you have two or three residents who want to do this, doesn't mean that we start enacting laws for the entire city. You know, do you even want golf carts on these roads? I mean, we're not designed for that. You know, it's, the streets aren't designed for it, the locations of the subdivisions aren't designed for it. You know, it's not like, you know, when you go up to New Smyrna Beach and the golf carts are driving up and down three miles worth of road, you know, four miles worth of road, and it's one road, it's one shot, it's up and down, and, you know, all they allow up there are the low-speed vehicles also, you know, they don't allow golf carts. But, you know, if you've got somebody who lives in Waverly Woods, and, you know, even with a low-speed vehicle, I guess they could...
No.
Yet again, we figured it out. Yeah, you probably could get over there.
You cross 419 to East Bridge, go through RTS, cross over Mitchell Hammock to Alphavis Boulevard, go up to Claire Lee.
Oh, okay.
And come in.
I thought you rode the wheel of the way. You could almost walk and dance through it.
Yeah. So I think that's got to be the philosophical question. I mean, because I don't know about the rest of yours, but I've been getting, you know, eight, nine, 10 emails about people riding golf carts all over Mead Manor, and the kids out on the roads, and I know I've sent them to the chief. You know, it just isn't safe. I mean, that's the bottom line. And I get that, you know, we can't be everybody's parent, and it's up to the parent to decide, but, I mean, I've got kids on Chapman who live down in the county who ride that non-registered little golf cart up and down into my neighborhood to see their friends, and, I mean, they, literally, the other day, they had like six or eight kids, last week, hanging off of this thing going down Chapman, and it's just what kids do. But, you know, it's not safe. We shouldn't advocate it.
When you talked about the streets aren't designed for it, my biggest concern is the roundabout. That roundabout, that Geneva Drive and Oviedo Boulevard, you're looking to your right, or, you know, when you're looking for the oncoming traffic, you look right through a golf cart. It's not a solid vehicle like a car, and it cannot get out of the way of a larger vehicle. It just doesn't reach that kind of speed. And if somebody pulled up having a right-of-way on a golf cart or a low-speed, even a low-speed vehicle, and the guy in the next lane over doesn't see, you know, because they're looking left, I would worry about that, if it was me. I would not let my kids, or I probably wouldn't drive through there either on a vehicle of that nature.
And chief, you said earlier that you're not really looking to write tickets, and that's great. I mean, you're just informing everybody, maybe calling the kids' parents, however you're handling it, but how do you handle repeat offenders? I mean, you've got to have the one person who calls on the golf cart all the time that you all go out and visit, I would assume.
We haven't gotten a, we haven't made contact with the same people driving at the same time. So we may come in contact with a golf cart, but not necessarily the same driver.
Okay. All righty, well, it sounds to me as if we're just going to stick with the chief's recommendations. Is that what I heard? Yes?
The only thing I would suggest is somehow trying to keep them off of Lockwood, because that's just an accident waiting to happen.
I don't know how we would do that. I mean, I don't know that we have any, I mean, that I have seen or heard of or been reported to. But it's legal.
I think if, I'd wait till it became an issue before I would necessarily pass an ordinance or anything.
36 miles an hour, does it?
Yeah.
Right?
That works. Anything, it has to be under 35 or under, so.
All righty, is there any other discussion on LSVs and golf carts?
Hey, does anybody know, up in the villages, obviously, it's a big community for golf carts, do they follow the state statute? Do they have their own, because they have lanes for them? And, I mean, I've seen regular golf carts up there. Do they, does anybody know how they do it up there?
I'm not. I've seen both, though, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't think I've seen license plates. A couple of times I've been up there. Some have license plates, some don't.
I don't think they follow it, because they're built for it, you know?
All right, the ones that look like Cadillacs and Hummers.
And like you say, you're not built for it.
And up in the villages, you don't have 14-year-olds driving them.
Right. Right. That is true.
Gotcha. All right.
All righty, so anything else? Bob, this is your item.
Sounds good to me.
All righty, we're good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item is just proposed budget adjustments, so for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and Brian, I will turn it over to you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is our last work session before we begin the two public hearings in September. We had a few things that we wanted to bring to you tonight, some adjustments that we've made, that we've gotten new revenues in, we had to make some adjustments to our expenses as well. Good news is we're balanced. Best news is that we did very well with our fund balance. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boone, and let him take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, honorable mayor, city council members. Mr. Cobb's right, we did have a few minor adjustments since the proposed budget was provided to you in the month of July. All those adjustments are provided to you in attachment number two, and we'll look at that in just a moment. But taking a look at the general fund as a whole, the revenue's finished at $30,144,000, which is $29,000 less than what was presented to you in the month of July, almost $30,000 in fact. But the good news is that here, this number right here, the use of fund balance was reduced by about $67,000. So we'll look at the detail of that in just a moment. Going down and looking at expenses, expenses finished right now at $30,449,000. The net operating results before transfers, a loss of $305,000, which is offset by transfers in, transfers out, et cetera. So the bottom line is revenues equal expenses in the general fund budget, and we are balanced. Looking at the very bottom, what was the impact on our operating reserve? Again, we projected an operating reserve at the beginning of the year of 6.8 million, which ties back to the 2018 CAFR. The withdrawal from fund balance that we just previously discussed was $335,000. That lands us at 6.5 million. GFOA's best practices of 16.67 percent is $5,075,000. We exceed that number by 1.4, almost 1.5 million. Looking at our own internal policy of 15 percent, which is 4.5 million, we exceed our own internal policy at 1.9 million. We're projecting right now to land, and not knowing what our fiscal year results for 2019 are going to be, at about 21.44 percent. So that's the recap for the general fund as a whole, without looking at the detail. Any questions?
What, so the 6.86 million projected fund balance, that's what you're projecting after the 209,000 use of fund balance for 19? Or do you think that we even use fund balance in 2019?
2019, probably not.
Okay.
Probably not.
So...
I would hate to give you an estimate of where we're going to land right now, we watch that very closely.
But is this, is this, so was this at the beginning? So this says ties to fiscal year 2018 CAFR?
That's correct.
So this was the beginning balance in, for fiscal year 19?
Correct.
So we, so you're not using any of the use of fund balance?
Yes, great question, we did not use that.
All right. So that number actually could potentially be higher or lower, because if we actually used that 209,000 that was in the fiscal year 19 budget, then it would only be 2, or 6.6 million, something like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
The 21 percent, what does that equate to in dollars? Do you know?
Uh, 6.5.
Oh, is that it? Okay, that, okay, there it is. I didn't know that that was...
And Jerry, that projected beginning balance could actually still be higher, once you close out on the books.
Absolutely. I'm expecting it to be higher.
It usually is.
Usually. Just keep these hurricanes away from us.
You spend the money very widely.
That, I think, is the highest reserve that I can recall that we have.
Well, other than the $8 million that used to be floating around there that none of us knew about, but that's besides the point.
Oh, that was the Bob, that was the Bob budget, yeah.
Let's see, I don't think there's anybody here who remembers those. Oh, yeah, I see one person laughing, two, yeah, there's a few here who remember those days.
That was the Wilford budget. The Bob budget picking destroyed all of that.
Yeah. Yeah, the $8 million was the magic pot that Mary Lou used to talk about all the time.
It was just sitting there.
There you go.
I think when I started, this number was 2.3 million.
Yeah.
Back in 2012.
I don't recall it being that.
It used to be, Mr. Wilford, do we have the money to do that? I'll find the money.
Well, we're approaching that now. So, any more questions? Okay, if we can go to the detail, Kelly? Looking at the detail, these are the revenue adjustments that we made, that we just spoke about in the general fund summary. Looking at the utility service taxes for electric and the electric franchise fees, we trended those out a little bit higher than we probably should have, and we looked at those very closely and decided that we needed to reduce them. However, those were offset nicely by the increase in state revenue sharing from the state of Florida, as well as the half-cent sales tax. And as we previously discussed, we are projecting, or we have actually reduced the use of fund balance by $67,000, which is excellent, because I was very nervous going into the end of the year with a $400,000 use of fund balance. So we did a lot of things. We looked at these revenues very closely, tried to develop a little bit more of a conservative position, as well as when we get down into the expenditures, you'll see that we met with some of the individual department heads and asked them for some help in meeting that reduction below 3, below $400,000. So moving on, going into the expense component, again, with the renewal of public risk management, they passed on the retention credits to us following the renewal, which I think was about $20,000 overall, maybe 30, I can't remember, I apologize off the top of my head. But nonetheless, that was, that impacted the general fund and allowed us to reduce the insurance for workers comp and liability in the general fund by about $20,000. Other current charges, we increased by $2,400. Good story here, kudos to the Clerk's Department, because they saw an operational need to address the lean searches that came into the department, and they thought that it'd be a lot more efficient if we put a credit card machine in their office so they could take payment immediately, rather than bouncing the customers around the city for payment. So that increase there represents the service charges associated with paymentists. And looking at, which are the credit card charges. Now, looking at this section right here, this is all IT-related. We, myself, Nadia, and Kelly met with Mike and said, "Mike, we need some help. We gotta get the balance down below $400,000." So this is the contribution from IT that allows us to do that. And looking at development services, a lot of work was done in development services to help with the comprehensive plan amendment for next year. That was going to cost us $200,000. We took a look at some of those line items and offset them internally before we got to this process. But in addition to that, we found this line item here from monitors that can be purchased out of IT. Rideaway mowing, we identified places where we could make some cuts for $25,700. Other insurance was increased by $11,000 to, basically by coverage for the state statute that was passed mandating that we had responsibility for certain types of firefighter cancers. So that covers that. Salaries and benefits, this is all Parks and Rec, right here, Recreation and Parks. Essentially, following the proposed budget, there was a reclass of certain positions. The facilities operations and maintenance position was reclassed to a facilities manager. That position will be directly responsible for facilities operations and maintenance, which is the, all the personnel, as well as the custodial functions. The Parks Superintendent was reclassed to the, a Parks Manager position. That position will be responsible for Parks operations and maintenance, and the athletic field, the athletic, athletics, I'm sorry. Thank you. The athletics foreman was reclassed to the Parks Superintendent, and that position will be directly responsible for the day-to-day operations of all the parks, as well as the individuals of personnel. So those were the changes that were made there. In addition to that, looking at this position right here, the Park Ranger, this is the new position, following the significant investments that we've made in all of our parks, we determined that we needed to have somebody or personnel on-site in all the parks at all times. So we felt that this is a good addition to bring in. That position starts on January 1st, and that will allow us to have occupancy in all of our parks, watching the assets that we've put in place at all times.
Kind of flow from park to park?
At this point, position we primarily assign to the Aquatics Center and to Round Lake Park. So they will take care of those two.
Just those two.
Just those two. The primary thing that this allows is that we have our crews, the crew Shane Kettle and the crew at OSC, the crew that covers Center Lake Park and Boston Hill. It'll allow them to stay in those areas longer, is the idea behind it. The idea of the Park Rangers is to put them in what I call the minor parks, the Sweet Waters, the Friendships, the Round Lakes. If you consider the investment that we've made in Round Lake Park, Round Lake Park is not a staff park, and so this puts a person in Round Lake Park pretty much almost the entire day. There's minor work that has to be done at the Aquatics Center, but then they will be over at Round Lake Park for the rest of the day, so that they will be sitting there, you know, eyes on this investment that we've made in Round Lake Park. And we hope to start doing that, the other minor parks as well, if this part of it works.
Looking at the rest of these areas right here, again, myself, Nadia, Kelly met with Paul and Drew, and we came up with an additional, or they came up with an additional $31,000 cuts across the various different line items within their department. So the net of all this is that we had a $29,000 reduction in revenue. It was offset by a $29,000 reduction in expenses, and for that, that rounds out the activity in the general fund following the presentation of the proposed budget to you. Any questions?
All right, so, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Okay.
Okay. So this is where I have heartburn. We're adding another FTE to our Parks and Recs department. We just added one in this year's budget, and we're gonna add another one, and we'll reclass in positions. And yet, we're reducing, you know, our budget on IT, and were there any other from, you know, from other departments, were there any other requests for additional staff that were made in this budget cycle, from our planning department, from our Public Works Department? I just feel like, I mean, I love our Parks and Recs department, but I feel like we're adding a lot of staff there, and there's other areas that possibly could use staff, and I would like to make sure that everybody got a good shot at staffing up. And I know that, you know, there were changes in the budget and everything, but I just wanna make sure that we're putting our FTEs in the right spots.
We meet every June to discuss the needs of the entire city, whether it be capital, FTEs, minor purchases, et cetera. And following the presentations of each individual director over the departmental needs, we vote over what we feel are the most important changes that need to be made, if we can get them into the budget process in the next fiscal year. And so, to answer your question, I would say yes, everybody has had a fair chance to participate in the process throughout the various different sessions that we've had. But nonetheless, at the end of the process, we can't afford to fund everything.
May I ask a question? Jerry? So, to get to your point, so the cuts that were made in certain departments, and obviously they made them, so I just wanna get it out for the record, so those directors in, let's say, IT feel like those cuts were fine and are not gonna affect the service to the citizens?
That is correct.
They felt like they could take that off, and that was good.
That is correct.
But the full-time Ranger, though, I mean, you think about it, and Brian brought up a great point. I mean, all the money and grants and everything that is put in Round Lake Park, it seems like almost every grant we got, and every, we did a lot of upgrades, but I always say Round Lake Park got such an upgrade to have somebody watching that now. You know, someone goes in there one day and just starts facing everything, and you got, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of them. I think that's good. You know, I mean, you work in a big company, I mean, most guys won't get rid of stuff unless they feel like, yeah, I really don't need, that we probably need. But as long as they're good, then they're fine. They didn't need, that's why they cut.
Brian?
Yes, sir. This is the only position that's recommended in our budget. If I remember correctly, Jerry, we also have a fire inspector position. We have a police officer position. We have a police sergeant position. That's primarily to give us a sergeant in the SRO program. And, I'm missing one. It's not the only position. There's, oh, a new SRO, that's it. There were other, and there's also other reclasses that we were, we've been able to do. We were able to do, I believe we had something in utilities. But, I'm not capturing all of them in my brain right now, unfortunately.
Okay.
But it's not the only position. This was one that, we were working on this reclass, and it was all triggered by the facilities manager. And when we started looking at the marketability of a facility superintendent, we didn't have a market to get a qualified individual in here to run our facilities division. And that was what we wanted to do. And when we started looking at, if we elevated to a facilities manager, then we started looking at the department as a whole, and we started seeing other areas that we could improve, as, like in parks as well. And so that's when we started looking at the reorganization as a whole. And it will give, to me, it gives the department a, one, we're gonna have, we've got a facilities position that will be marketable to someone that we're looking for. Two, it gives the department a managerial structure now that we've got that, and we can start succession thing. We can start doing all those good things that you can do when you've got a good organizational structure within the department. We also have a young man in the Parks Division that is extremely talented and is ready to move to that next supervisory level, and taking him to that superintendent's position is going to, well, it's gonna be a big challenge for him, but I think he'll rise to it. And it's gonna show us if he's ready to, when the Parks Manager leaves, if he's gonna be ready to, hopefully will be ready to move into that Parks Manager position as well. So we've got a, we've got a rising star there.
One of the things we're...
Drew's leaving?
Damn, he outlasted me. I didn't think he would.
We got a timetable. We got a timetable. Now, one of the things is that with the facilities is that it's gonna allow us to create work groups in maintenance and in custodial, and one of the ideas Mr. Bowler had is to take custodial to a nighttime shift, so that they can work unobstructed by the daytime employees. But there still would be a daytime custodial presence in maintenance. And so the maintenance manager, the facilities manager would cover both maintenance and custodial as well. And so, that was it, but this isn't the only one. This was the one since July that it finally shook out of the tree. And so that's the reason we wanted to bring it to you tonight.
Were there any other, you know, any other positions that were requested that didn't get, you know, brought to the table?
They all got brought to the table. I'm trying to think if there was one, I'm trying to think of one in particular that...
Let me ask this question just a different way. You're responsible for staffing this city. Does this city staff in a way that the city council, this one and future city councils, are not gonna have to worry about you delivering the high level of service that our residents expect? Because ultimately, we can sit here and question it all night long, which I really don't want to, but it falls on your shoulders. So are you comfortable, should be the question, I think, Deputy Mayor is.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I'm not trying to put words.
Right, no, no, that's, you said it very well. You've been doing this for a while.
Wait, I'll, I'll put it this way. We have not fully recovered from the reduction in force that was done from 2017.
How long are we gonna use the Rich Gestrick experience?
But, what we have done is strategically recovered. And so you brought up development services. Development Services has all its positions. Now, unfortunately, in the market, in development services right now, it tends to be very nomadic, and people are leaving with short tenures. That's just the market itself. But as far as the positions are concerned, we've restored them. And we still also have our contractual backups in place as well, so we're good. In Fire, we identified the need for the inspector. We needed that, so that we can start doing more inspections, as well as improving plan review. So that was, that was identified need in there. Police Department, we're still, well, one, we're still filling existing vacancies, but we have that need. With the increased level of security in the schools, we have to fill those positions. And anytime, and the thing that we try not to do is put a rookie in a school. You know, we put them on the road and let them learn how to be a police officer, and we take the tenured police officers and we move them into the schools. So, good news is, is that we're putting a tenured officer, and the school board's covering 50 percent, and then is it number eight and nine, or nine and 10? Nine and 10, they're paying 100 percent. So that's a good thing. I wish we could convince them to do the sergeant as well, but we're still working on that one. But we have a need, you know, with our growing population, that we're gonna have a need, we may have a need for a police officer each year, we don't know. We, Recreation was the one that took the biggest hit with the reductions. And so we've been gradually trying to bring them back, but the thing is, is that we've been, once again, trying to do it strategically, the same way in Public Works. We've been trying to do it, rather than just going in and saying, well, we cut this, 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 and this positions, let's just fill those positions. We haven't done that. We've always assessed our operation and said, we have this need here. And that's how we've tried to do it. I mean, we've been able, we've been able to accomplish it through reclassifications, and we've been able to accomplish it through, you know, one position here, one position there. But we've always based it on where we saw the need. That's what we've been doing. Have we completely recovered? No, but we've strategically recovered. So, yes, we do, sometimes I'm amazed at how, the high level of service that our staff provides with, you know, because we're lean. But we do try to, anytime that we have a specific need, we try to address it. And that's what we've tried to do in this budget as well, as far as police and Fire. Recreation, I think, I keep wanting to think there was one in Public Works as well.
What about finance?
Finance is doing really well right now.
Finance is really near and dear to his heart, you know that.
No, but no, if you're comfortable with it, I'm fine with it. I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we're not, like, loading up an area too heavy.
Oh, no, if I could, one of the things, one of my goals, one of my short-term goals is I would love to get another crew in Public Works. That's what I'd love to. I just feel like we need one. I mean, we're covering it, we're doing it, we're meeting level of service, but that's one of the things that we probably need to start looking at now. That's probably the next big need that we need to start looking at, is another crew in Public Works.
Okay.
Okay, so Brian, so the answer, I know you gave us all the details, so the answer is yes, because of the couple hundred thousand emails that I've gotten over 14 years, and, you know, they come in all the time, I don't hear any resident calling me up and saying that our service stinks in the city of Oviedo, and what needs to be said is yes, and you hit it right in the head, we can't keep blaming Rich Gestrick, although I would like to, to be honest with you.
I blame the economy.
Right? He could be home right now, watching this. That's good, that's why I said that. But it's really more a testament to the employees that we have, because many of them I see, and I won't mention names, but especially directors and ones right under them, wearing multiple hats now.
Steve, you're not running for reelection.
No, I'm just saying.
Go ahead. Say what's on your mind.
You don't want me to say what's on my mind. But I'm just saying, you see people wearing multiple hats, and we may not ever have to get back to the 300-plus, wherever we were when the Gestrick days were here, because people are doing, you know, stuff. And make sure you take care of them when their review comes up.
That was the Seber days, 345 or something like that.
You know, and it's something that concerned me, and I don't wanna steal your thunder, but if you go onto like the Capital Improvement Plan, there is a lot of Public Works projects there, and I just wanna make sure that we have the manpower or the resources to make sure to make this happen.
Just one last point, then we'll move on. You mentioned the sergeant. Have you been talking to Sanford about that? Because I think they're running into the same issue, because between the only two cities in Seminole County with the number of... Because between the only two cities in Seminole County with the number of resource officers that we all have, the largest are us and Sanford by far. I mean, we're not even close to the others. So I know that Norton has mentioned this before at Mayor's Managers. So it might be something, maybe strength in numbers, to go have a conversation, because we're dedicating nine officers now?
Ten.
Ten. Ten officers to, to the schools. And I'm certainly not saying that's not important and a priority. That, that isn't my point. But my point is, is with that much manpower on the roads, and, and the cost sharing is extremely generous. But if, you know, we need to have somebody in a management position, which I guess a sergeant would be, is that it? He is in charge of it? It might be a discussion worth having. You know, parks and rec, you're right, they, that was a low-hanging fruit during the budget cuts. But a lot of that work was outsourced, and we're starting to bring it all back in-house. Now, you know, whether bringing it back in-house is good or not, time will tell. You know, I'm more of an outsourced guy when it comes to that. You all know that. But, you know, we're adding positions in parks and rec so we can have the in-house staff so that we could have more control over the way the parks are maintained. I just hope that the level of what's being done continues to grow. You know, because they're, you know, I, I know it's very hard to take care of all these parks, and I'm not picking on anybody. Everybody, Drew and staff, do a great job. But, you know, Oviedo on the park was supposed to be kept Disney-ish, and it's not. I mean, so it, it's, it's maintained better than any other park, but it's certainly not at the level, in my mind, that we expected. So. And Brian, the one thing that you mentioned, and we have to keep hammering home, because a large percentage of our residents understand this, but just how lean this budget is. You know, and, and how much gets done around here, and how many multiple hats staff wears. You know, especially those out in the field. And, you know, sometimes there's no appreciation from certain residents about this, but again, not the majority, that, that vocal minority. You know, they just don't realize that they have the second lowest military in Seminole County and all of these services. But off my soapbox for now. Jerry, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pollack, for your comments. Moving on to the utilities, if you can. This is the first time we presented the utility budget to you this year. And pretty much the utility budget flows just like the general fund budget does. The revenues themselves are very linear. They're related to consumption, how the services are used, et cetera. Looking at the water revenues at the very top, we're forecasting a reduction this year of about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Reason for that is because we, we may have been a little bit aggressive in our budgeting for this year for the water sewer, excuse me, the water revenues. So we wanted to be very careful going into the next fiscal year to make sure that we had corrected that. Reclaimed revenues are projected to increase twenty thousand. Irrigation revenues, a slight decrease of nine thousand. Sewer revenues up one hundred and seventy-one, other revenues up ten thousand. And here are the use of fund balance. The use of fund balance has increased by four point nine million dollars. And the reason that fund balance has increased is because of the capital projects that we have on the books for the next year. And also, an extensive amount of work has been done in renewal and replacement. So the fund balance is going to be used, the use of fund balance is going to be used to fund these projects over here as well as this line item right here, which has increased one point two million. That's a transfer out to the water and sewer renewal and replacement fund. So a lot of good work's been done over the last year, and a lot of good work is planned for next year. So that's the reason why the use of fund balance has increased. Now, kudos to Bobby and his staff, because they've taken a very conservative approach to their budgeting over the last several years. And that's what has enabled us to use this fund balance. Normally, when you go out and you have an aggressive schedule like this with your capital projects, these, these projects are bonded, okay? Or you go out and get some sort of a loan to get them done. But here, very importantly, we're able to pay cash for these projects, which means that we pay a significant less amount of money for them. So kudos to Bobby and his staff for running a very good operation that's enabled us to get to this place. Looking at the expenses, again, the expenses run pretty much just like the general fund. Salaries and benefits up three percent, overtime up slightly, health insurance up slightly, trending just like everywhere else. Workers' compensation and general insurance, that reflects the reductions of PRM. Vehicle replacement fund down slightly. Operating expenses are up according to volumes that are taking place within the department, as well as inflation. And again, capital expenses, we talked about that. That's this list over here. And the reserve for contingency reduced slightly, down to a hundred thousand dollars. So we have total revenues of twenty-one million, which includes a five million dollar use of fund balance. It gets total expenses of twelve point eight million, contribution of eight point two, mainly because of the use of fund balance. And then transfers in, transfers out, debt basically brings us to a zero balance. Total revenues equal total expenditures. Now, to, to make the presentation very similar, the financial statements are very different for the water sewer fund or for the enterprise funds. But to make them very similar and understandable and relational to the general fund, what we've done here is we have projected sort of fund balance, which really is cash. So we've taken the available cash that we currently have, or what we projected to have at the end of this fiscal year. We've reduced it by the use of fund balance, which is five million, two oh three, this line right here. And we're projecting an ending cash balance of about five million dollars at the end of the year. This is the floor. I don't want us to get below this going forward operationally. This is sufficient to cover the hundred and twenty days of, that we, of operational expenses on our books as well as this is sufficient to cover debt service should we cease operations for any unknown reason for an extended period of time. So this is the, this is where we should land. And this, going forward, I would not want our numbers to be any lower than the five million dollars. But anyways, that's the recap of the utilities, and that's where we land if we in fact do all these copper projects in the next fiscal year. With that, I'll take any questions.
Jerry, I do have one. If you can go back up to the top revenues. I see the sewer revenues are increasing. And sewer revenues are generally based on water usage, because the charge for the sewer is what comes out of the tap. But potable water revenue is going down.
Again, I.
Help me understand that.
It's because we, we overestimated these water revenues here last fiscal year, or this current fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. This number, we estimated this year to be about six point five million. And we're not trending up to that six point five. It looks like we're gonna land right about six point two at the end of the year. So really, this kinda holds it flat, brings it back down to a reasonable amount, okay? So we're very concerned, because what, the, the thing that you have with the water revenues and not so much the sewer revenues, you're right, they're relational, but there's a base that we get for the sewer, is that this is driven by weather as well. So if you have a, a rather wet year, this number will be down, okay? If you have a rather dry year, this number will be up. Now, when we started the year in the month of May, our water revenue soared, because drag was, May was a very dry month, okay? But, Mr. Mayor, I, it's just a hard, it's a hard number to nail down. It doesn't make sense. But you've got base fees that support these. You have a small base amount that supports the water revenues, but you have a significant base fee that supports the sewer revenues.
That makes sense. I, I, I just saw it, and it jumped out to me when I was looking at it.
Yeah, we, we don't like it, because it's, because we overestimated a little bit this, this current year. And hopefully, we're not being conservative the other way, which is a risk. It's difficult to know, and we can always make those adjustments mid-year, next year, if we need to be.
I would think council would appreciate you being more conservative than.
Jerry, the.
Yes, sir.
Like in the general fund where we do fifteen percent, but we're up to twenty-one, which is great. Did we ever set a policy for water and sewer, a reserve of fifteen percent?
I think it was based on days.
You can't, yeah, it's based on days.
It's a hundred and twenty days.
This is a totally different financial beast, animal.
Okay, so the hundred and twenty days you spoke about.
Correct.
If you got a hundred and twenty days to operate cash in the bank, you're good.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a hundred and twenty days, not percent.
It's a very solid position.
Good.
It backs up our double A rating.
Cool.
Any questions?
So, so going back to my, my last discussion item, the, or not the last discussion item, but the one where I was talking before.
Going back to golf carts?
No, I wasn't going back to golf carts. This capital, the capital projects, is this something that is, is doable in this fiscal year?
You said it was all funded?
Yes, it's all funded.
Well, no, I'm not talking about funded. I'm talking about. Yes.
Honestly, it will be tough. Just because everyday operations and dealing with residents and projects that come up in-house, residential, you know, drainage things that have, we got behind, to be, to be completely honest, behind in the last year, because that one staff member quit. And it took us five months to replace her. I mean, it's been, it's been tough with staffing. So it all depends on to be able to maintain current staffing.
Okay.
You know?
So that's just the economy.
That's an aggressive schedule.
And, and normally, when I, when I look at, you know, capital items like this, like Mr. Booth said, normally I would see, you know, some sort of debt being, being issued to, to support these. And so you would have that, you wouldn't wanna issue too much debt and not be able to accomplish it. But being that this is cash, that's not too much of an issue. But I just wanted to, you know, if, you know, if, if there's stuff here that, that, you know, I don't want the expectation to be that we're gonna accomplish all this stuff, and then you, you fall short of that.
One thing to understand on this schedule right here, you see the two million dollar project? That's cutting a check to FDOT. That's when the waterman gets replaced in a roadway. So some of that stuff.
April first.
Yeah, is, is handled outside of us. It's not us. Once we write the check, we get, we hand it off. It's in design right now.
And you got all the, the skated systems.
Some of that's done by plant staff, specific to their plants. It's just tech upgrades.
Right.
Just to, to keep up.
Right.
Some of those other things are infrastructure improvements. They just need to be done. And then we actually do have a improvement for our own facility, because we're out of space.
And then, and then when we're creating the rates, the water rates and stuff, are we taking into account? So as, as we deplete this, this reserves here, 'cause what, these reserves were created from past rate payers. And the current rate payers are now taking advantage of, of the, the over collection, basically the over collection from the past. Are we, are we making sure that we're, we're gonna be able to build back up to continue this infrastructure improvements and everything through our rate structure? Or are we running the rates pretty lean?
Yes, absolutely. We are currently talking with Wildan right now, Wildan Financial Services. And one of the things that we talked about just as recently as last week, in fact, is doing another utility rate study. One has not been done since two thousand and twelve. There's been some real reasons for, for delaying it, because of, of an outstanding lawsuit. And we didn't wanna get caught up in that whole deal, that process. But that is on the books for this next year. We are currently in the process of contracting with them. In addition to that, we are also contracting with them to do a, a utility billing audit, just to make sure that everything is copacetic with our meters, that all our GIS locations line up with our meter services, et cetera, et cetera. That is on the books for this next fiscal year. In fact, that's how we found that issue that led to the lawsuit five years ago. So, yes, we are doing those things to make sure that our rates are fair and effective. And the other thing that we've been concerned about too, is the type of growth that we've had in the city over the last five years. So much in commercial, so much in residential, is our rate blend or our rate development correct? So they're going to go back in and take a look at that and, and make sure that they are fair, and whether or not any adjustments need to be made.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that, the mayor and I both looked at each other when we said, new, new water rate study. We're like, the eyes rolled. All right, so we've been through this water rate study. Bobby, stay here too, because I have a question for you. How many times are we gonna look at the water? We're supposed to do the indexing. Now it's supposed to take care of everything. And now we're gonna go do another rate study. I mean, when did we just do the last one? It was recent.
It, it seems like Wildan was just here.
They were, yeah. I mean, we, we said we'll do the indexing, that will cover it. And I remember some, one of us, or it might even be me.
It was just two years ago, I thought.
Saying, okay, if we approve this, is this gonna take us out for five, ten years? And the answer at that time was, if we do this.
Were they here for stormwater, maybe?
And so I'm just confused.
Stormwater was two thousand and seventeen.
Is that when we sat up in the conference room and had all the graphs in charge?
Yes.
We had to choose door A, B, C, or D?
Yes, that was one of them. Prior to that, back in two thousand and fourteen, we did a revenue sufficiency study for the water utility. We did not do a rate study. We did a revenue sufficiency study.
Okay.
The difference is, what revenues do you need to operate your utility versus are all the revenue classes fair and equitable to the users? And that's what the rate study will provide us.
I guess I, I realize that it's all different pots of money, and I get it. But we've been trying to do visioning around here for five or six years, and I, we keep being told that we don't have the money to do it. But yet, it seems like Wildan has a suite upstairs. I mean, no offense. I'm just confused. Because it seems like they're here all the time, and we're constantly doing this. And, I mean, these aren't inexpensive studies, and I realize they're needed, and you have to have the professionals come in. But, you know, I thought indexing took care of all that.
That's what I, that's what I.
I don't know why we're having to come back in, but it won't be for me to deal with, but I'd like an explanation and a cost. What's the cost?
Oh, we've not gotten that far.
Okay.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Okay. Well, listen, if you, if you blend it all together and lower the rates, I'll be the happiest guy.
Well, well, listen, I, I just, and like you said, we're not gonna be here. Emma and Judith, listen to this. We've done, these guys have been in here so many times, and I remember the last time, and I, and I got a little aggravated with it. I said, and, and in the work sessions with Brian, I said, all right, nobody wants a rate, rate increase, but if we do this, we're good. So unless something massively has changed, you know, it's, you gotta live within your means. And I don't know if they have a suite upstairs, but, you know, and, and certainly that's not the intention or the implying that. But, you know, you guys gotta look at that going forward. I mean, the, the rates can't keep going up after we said the last time that we would just deal with it. So, I mean, and they may not have to go up. I mean, you, you, you may not have to.
We have to maintain a healthy system.
Right.
To do the capital improvement projects. I mean, that's all completely understandable. But having been here when, you know, water was, you know, a dollar a month for everybody, because we were paying for it out of the general fund, to making it into an enterprise fund, to tripling everybody's rates. And if you wanna talk about them wanting to burn down City Hall, you all should have been here then. None of you were here then. That was, that was a fun.
What was the guy's name you used to get into with who did the water before Wildan, the guy?
Robert Horry.
Oh, yeah, Robert. Robert used to come in and tell the same thing. If you do this, you're good.
No, Robert used to come in and say, oh, you just have to raise your rates. That was his only answer.
Right. We have to do it. Well, anyway, Jerry, listen, just keep an eye on that. I mean, if you need him.
We're not criticizing.
Yes, you need him, you need him. It's just like, it was weird. I looked at him, I said, what?
The minute you said that, we both looked at each other like, what?
The rate study doesn't mean that there's going to be an increase in rates.
Right.
It means that you want to ensure that the rates that you're currently charging are fair and equitable. That all the classes, the relationship between the tiers.
But when we just did that, though, two years ago.
That, that was stormwater.
We didn't do water?
No, no, that, that, he's right about that. That was storm.
Water's not been done since two thousand and twelve.
Okay, all right, well.
Stormwater was the, when we were doing the golf course. Remember, we were all upstairs. Well, not all together, but.
All right, well.
All right.
But just do it. Bobby, I got one thing for you. So in all these projects, you know, you'll get to whatever you can get. Where are we on replacing all the street signs to the white and black ones? Because like if I drive through Kingsbridge East, there's some ones in there that are just bad. Do we have an ongoing program? Are we just fixing them as a?
Yeah, what we, the, the process in play right now is, as we resurface, everything, everywhere we resurface in a residential area gets it. And then depending on the amount of funding we have left over, we're targeting areas.
Oh.
And what I'm looking at right now, is because I got a residential complaint, so I'm actually taking the idea and looking into it, is the entire northwest quadrant of the city. Everything pretty much north of four twenty-six. of the city. Everything pretty much north of 426 and west of, well, not just west, but a little east of, too, of Lake Charm Drive, that entire, trying to hit, see if I can hit that area at one time this next year.
So pretty much, when you go resurface a neighborhood, that's when you're changing the sign?
Yes, sir.
Unless you get something.
That was the, I was trying to think of the fairest way to get at it, rather than picking and choosing. It's just as we resurface, do it, and then pick another older neighborhood and try and catch up.
That's a good program. And I would just say, as you guys ride around, like I know like in Kingsbridge East, like the Bishop sign, that one's really deteriorative. Your guys are out, you know, riding around, and they see one that's bad, can you just fix those?
And whenever we replace them, absolutely, they get replaced with a new one.
Yeah. And then the other thing, too, Mitchell Hammock heading eastbound. I had a resident in Kingsbridge West call me, heading east. Road is like dimpling, you know? And you've fixed a lot of it. Is there a problem with the
And I apologize for this. We actually are behind, another thing we're behind on resurfacing for fiscal year 19 is just now coming up here pretty soon. And everything we have is being thrown at Mitchell Hammock. And I wouldn't be surprised if it takes two fiscal years to hit it. We have, we have to dedicate everything we have to get Mitchell Hammock resurfaced.
Yeah, I could see where you guys have patched them, but like, it seems like from just a little bit in the eastbound side, a little bit west of Kingsbridge West, there's that section there where there's these long stretches.
It's coming apart.
Is it, is it the base, or is it just a, is it, you don't know?
I think it's a combination of things.
A little, little bit of everything.
Last time we repaved Mitchell Hammock, that was when
When my first start here was in 2002-ish, it was just starting to be done. So it was a couple-year period back then. So yeah, it's
That was a long project from one end to the other. And, like, do you remember, remember we were doing it at night? That was fun.
Oh, yeah. And well, the next round will be done at night. We have to. That's the only way to get it done.
Oh, that's good. Whoever's sitting here will get all the phone calls. It won't be me. My house is rumbling at night. All righty. Jerry, let's continue on. 10-year CIP looks like it's next.
Actually, we're going to jump into stormwater.
Okay.
The 10-year CIP was provided to you for informational purposes.
Okay.
To back up what was presented here.
Looks like we have some reclaimed in Twin Rivers Phase 1, Phase 2, and Riverside over the next five years. So we'll see.
Okay. Looking at stormwater, again, the presentation is very similar to the general fund. The stormwater revenues are very linear. They're projected against ERUs by property. Next year, we're projecting an increase in revenues of $143,000. We're also projecting an increase in the use of fund balance of $138,000, and that's directly attributable to the increase in monies required for capital projects for next year. Looking at the expenses, salaries are increasing 3%. Over time is down slightly. Health insurance is expected is up slightly. Workers' compensation and general insurance, again, public risk management renewal is down. The vehicle replacement contribution required for next year is down a little bit as well. Operating expenses are down slightly, but again, capital expenses are up $460,000. Next year, if we go over to the right a little bit, Kelly, we are projecting $400,000 for replacement pipes, structures, and the Lake Charm drainage improvements. So going back over, debt is pretty much flat from year to year. The reserve for contingency is down to $50,000. So that leaves us with total revenues of 2.7 million against total expenses of 2.3 million, which is covered, which is taken up, excuse me, by our transfers out to the various different funds for the general fund, IT, golf course, et cetera. So again, matching this up and making it a presentation very similar to the general fund, where are we going to land with the fund balance, or what's our cash balance going to be at the end of the year? Our current cash balance is 776,000. We expect to use $138,000 in fund balance to cover some of the capital projects, and we're projecting our ending cash balance at $637,000, which is a solid position for the stormwater fund to be in. But in addition to that, we expect to get some monies in from FEMA over the next six to nine months for the stormwater pond corrections that we need to make as a result of Hurricane Irma. So
The ones out in Live Oak?
Yes, Live Oak and Little Creek.
We haven't been reimbursed for those yet?
No. We've just finished submitting all the paperwork to FEMA.
How much are you anticipating?
250 to 300,000.
That's not bad.
Yeah. Depends.
Well.
Depends.
How much did you ask for?
300,000.
All right.
So that rounds up the general fund, the water sewer fund, and the stormwater funds. Those are the three funds that we're going to present to you tonight. But in addition, we have some other attachments, like you stated, Mr. Mayor. The 10-year capital plan is out there as well. That was provided to support some of the numbers in both the utilities as well as the stormwater fund. You also have an attachment out there that reflects what we're going to place as an advertisement in the Orlando Sentinel. Is it September 16th, 15th?
12th.
12, okay. And also attached, we have provided you the proposed fee schedule for next year. So we need to have you guys look at that for us and give us any proposed changes to the fee schedule. The fee schedule is going to be provided to you again as a component of the September 5 meeting. So if we can be given any changes between now and September 5, that would be great. It will be presented again on September 16. So we need to have that scheduled final by September 16, if at all possible. So with that, any questions?
I see you have a total budget this year of about 89 million.
Correct.
Good job.
I have a question. Bobby, I see finally, in 2024, Riverside's going to get reclaimed about five years.
He's not committing to that. I already asked him.
Okay.
It's a tough one. One of the things that, taking consideration with these utility capital projects, costs have skyrocketed
Yeah.
over the past few years. And a lot of these estimates probably going to be very low, even right now, for like a 2024, 2025 horizon.
Right.
That's one thing to keep in mind, is especially when you're retrofitting neighborhoods.
Right.
It's just major
24 means 28, that's fine. It's all good. But my question is, when you go into a neighborhood that doesn't have any reclaimed infrastructure, you know, like Kingsbridge East, you could just, they had it when it was built, you got, do you have to dig up the street, or are you going on the lawns to put that new
You can do one of, one of different methods. You can drill it, you can go into the streets. What we've done in the past, we went into the streets. Little Creek, we went into the streets to fill in areas that were missing. I think Twin Rivers Phase 1, we went into the street. It's just easier. There's nothing in the street.
Kingsbridge West, you did in the street.
So you're digging a little trench in the street.
Yeah. And then we resurfaced the entire section of roadway.
And is that, and I think you guys have got this worked out, but when you do a new neighborhood, the reclaim is at a much higher pressure than the regular potable water, right? Because I remember you've turned on some neighborhoods and blew out some heads were shooting all over.
I couldn't quote to you the exact pressure coming out of our wastewater plant, but I know coming out of, when we have to open iron bridges, coming in 90 PSI.
Yeah, because the rest is like 60.
Yeah, we did have some issues in the past where, yeah, it did blow some irrigation.
So do you Iron bridge blows my part all the time.
Yeah. So one thing to, something that you probably don't know that's kind of exciting to talk about is, and y'all may not be aware, but at our wastewater plant, with new management, we have totally turned the plant around, and it is humming like a Cadillac right now with the amount of reclaim we're putting out and the amount of flow we're able to take in.
Well, you just keep turning the wastewater around, get it into our plant, and keep the revenue here.
Yeah, we've done, our staff's done some great things at the wastewater plant.
So the new one, so when you come out now, you don't, do you crank it down to match the 60s so you don't blow people's sprinkler systems?
It's regulated much better, yes.
It's regulated better?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But we're actually not using, we're not having to use iron bridges much anymore. And we actually got Chulioti Utility to give us more water. So we're doing our best.
I'll just put you down for 28, that's fine. And I like freshwater. My dress is a little greener, so it's all good. Jerry, are you done? You have more slides? You're all done?
No.
No, I just, I just wanted to, so I'll just go, he's done. So you're just going to go around?
Yeah, what do you mean?
All right, so I'm just going to say, you know, the last budget I'm going to see up here, I think, is probably the best
For now?
Well, maybe. You never know. A year off, you know, we'll keep that out there. You never know. But, but anyway, you guys, I mean, you always do a great job. You know, the alarmists like to say, we're going to have 20% tax increases. Never happens. Every year, we get more.
70 million in debt, we're
Yeah, we're all in debt and everything like that. And by the way, those two are not here tonight. Emma and Judith, thank you for coming to a very important meeting. But tonight, there'll be all kinds of junk, how we're in debt and everything. But you guys have done one heck of an amazing job here for so many years. This budget, 21% reserves, I mean, that's great. 70 million with a lot of it coming off. Everybody said we want to be a debt-free city like Altamont. Well, it's coming, you know? It's like anything else. You need something in life. You need a house. You just, you got to get a mortgage. And then you pay your mortgage off, you own the house. So we're paying off our stuff, and most of that was voter approved. So, you know, I will never worry about this city's financial situation with you guys here. You all did a great job. So, and then one, on a light note, I want to say Chief Buchanan, you've become a very good meteorologist, as I've told you. I appreciate those. Even when I'm not here, just put me on the list anyway because you guys are much more accurate, you-in-laws, than what I see on the news. So good job there, but
Yeah, he hasn't made his Facebook appearance yet, though.
No, he ain't doing that. Jeff, you just keep doing what you're doing. You stay under the radar, you stay out of trouble, everything's good. Coleman, he's doing the invocations, everything's good, we're all good. But no, thank you all. This was, did a lot of hard work. You make us look good. And I'm not going to worry when I'm not here. You know, you guys did a great job. So, but those naysayers that are going to be on Facebook tonight, I'm keeping an eye on you. We are not in any trouble at all. And you two, go tell them that, too. You know, and kudos to you for being here, because they ain't here, and that aggravates me. So, and wait, and like you said, hashtags is election every year, so you better do the right thing.
Hey, I'm just going to let Chief Buchanan know one thing. You know, we have about six or eight more meetings up here. You know, I'm not going to tell you when, but one night, you will be called for the invocation. So I would just be prepped, because I am going to say Chief Buchanan one night, and Dale's going to be getting up and go sit down. So I will do it to you before I leave.
Jeff, when you come, when you come to the podium, I'd like to bow your head in a moment of silence. Thank you.
We'll get Patrick up there one time, too. I heard Patrick do a wedding ceremony. It was awesome.
There you go.
Chief, anything?
Well, I've been working on the other side of the budget for 10 years. I know what it takes. You guys, as always, did a great job.
Wait, wait. Did Drew spend too much money again?
Always.
Okay. Bob, anything?
So just adding to what Councilman Hankin said, with the naysayers, we've got $6 million worth of infrastructure improvements here. We're keeping up with our infrastructure. We're, we're working towards, you know, shoring it up, adding to it. You hear a lot of people saying that we're not, you know, we're not keeping up with it, and we've got a really bad infrastructure, and that's just not true. We're keeping up with it. We've got a lot of money going towards it. We just got to keep the manpower to make the projects happen. So if we can, you know, get that, that extra crew somewhere that Mr. Cobb wants, that'll make it even better. But no, this is, this looks great. You all have done a fine job with it. And, you know, I know I pick on parks and recs all the time, but I just want to make sure everything is
That we all do.
I just want to make sure everything, everybody is, you know, getting what they need in order to keep the city at the level of service that the citizens have become accustomed to.
All righty. Well, with all that being said, it is 7:25.
What, you got nothing?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
They've done a great job all these years. You've all beat up on everybody.
Get the mic and drop it.
Yeah. Ah, yeah, this is like closing out the final one after all these years. But great job. Brian, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, Mayor.
All right. So this is going to come to us on September 5.
That'll be the first public hearing, and then the second will be September 16.
Okay. And I guess with all that being said, we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.